Call our April 5 meeting of the Cookeville City Council to order. Whoever will call, please.
Councilman Woodford.
Present.
Councilman Henry.
Here.
Mayor Shelton.
Here.
Vice Mayor Epps.
Here.
Councilman Walmsley.
Here.
All present.
Thank you at this time. I'd like to invite those that wish to do so to stand for the invocation given tonight by Brother Jeremiah Tatum from Willow Avenue Church of Christ, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to the United States Flag.
Let's pray together. Father, we thank you for a beautiful day, a beautiful spring day where we can enjoy the weather and think about the year that's to come and this time where we can get together as a group of people that are concerned about our city and our town and our county. And we're thankful for all the freedoms that we have and the ability to assemble. And we thank you for our physical blessings, our spiritual blessings, and we pray over this assembly tonight that everyone who's involved in it will be thinking about the betterment of our city and all the people of our city. We're thankful for the care and concern that we have for each other, for the love and the unity that exists in our world and especially here in our part of Tennessee. And we just ask, Lord, that you'll help us to have the type of attitude that would display Christ in everything that we do. Bless us tonight in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of which we stand, one nation of God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Brother Tatum. Item 3, consider approval of agenda as presented. Are there any changes or corrections?
Mayor, we have no changes to the agenda.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion, second. Any discussion? All vote?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Under 4A, consider appointment of the Cookeville Regional Medical Center Board of Trustees. I would nominate Cheryl Sandlin for that position. Are there any other nominations?
I'd like to nominate Alma Anderson.
All right. Any other nominations? We'll vote in order of nomination, so all in favor of Cheryl Sandlin, please vote.
Four votes.
All right. And Ms. Sandlin is our nominee. 4B, consider reappointment to the Historic Zoning Commission. Mr. Mills?
Mayor and councilmembers, the term of Alma Anderson for service on the Historic Zoning Commission expires this month. Ms. Anderson fills the community in general position on the commission and actually represents the Dixie Avenue Historic District. Members of the Historic Zoning Commission serve five-year terms, are appointed by the mayor with confirmation by a majority vote of the city council. Ms. Anderson has been contacted and has agreed to continue to serve if reappointed, and the planning department recommends for her reappointment.
Very good. I will nominate Alma Anderson to that board. Any other nominations? All vote?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you. 5B, old business, consider approval of minutes of council being held on March 15, 2018. Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
Motion, second. Any discussion? All vote?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Under the consent agenda, 6A, set a date, 5/3/18 for a public hearing on ordinance 0180406, amendment to the official street map. 6B, consider awarding bid for uniforms for the electric department. And 6C, consider awarding bid for reclosures for the electric department. Is there a motion on the consent agenda?
So moved. Second.
Motion, second. Any discussion? All vote?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Under new business, 7A, consider authorizing the city manager to execute settlement agreement with the Ayers estate. Mike Davidson.
Mayor and councilmembers, approximately two years ago, Mary Ayers passed away, and as part of her estate, she left quite a sum of money for the Cookeville-Putnam County Animal Shelter. And the estate has been working through the will and trying to get everything settled. And this agreement would, if approved by you tonight, would allow the animal shelter to receive somewhere in the neighborhood of $1.2 to $1.3 million when everything is said and done, and I would ask for your approval.
Very good. Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
Motion, second. Any discussion? All vote?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
7B, consider accepting deed for property along Veterans Drive and conveying remnant of easement adjacent to the same property. Mike Davidson.
Mayor and councilmembers, out along Veterans Drive, property is currently owned by, I think, Putnam Farm Supply was recently surveyed, and when that survey was complete, there's a small section of property that we thought was the city's, and I think everyone thought was the city's, that technically was turned out to still be owned by Putnam Farm Supply. On the screen, you can see the area outlined in red. That's owned by Putnam Farm Supply. They would be deeding that to the city, and the city would own that fee simple. The tract just below that, south of that, the city of Cookeville does own that, so we would, accepting this property, we would own that entire area outlined in red plus the other portion south of that. As part of this, too, we're conveying back to Putnam Farm Supply any interest we might have right around in that area that's not included in this area you see outlined in red. And I would ask for you to approve this and let us accept that property.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
Motion, second. Any discussion? All vote?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you. 7C, consider authorizing the city manager to sign one-year contract with Retail Strategies for Consulting Services. Melinda Kiefer.
Evening, Mayor and Council. What I've brought to you tonight is renewal on a contract with Retail Strategies. We have worked with them for about three years. We took a little break, and so this would be starting back up with consulting services. A few things I want to point out to you tonight. The new contract will include research to update our market analysis, our trade areas, and to look at current market trends for our area. It also will include a real estate analysis by analyzing our existing shopping centers, retail corridors, and kind of work on development and redevelopment of some of those areas. Retail recruitment, they will contact a minimum of 30 retailers, restaurants, and brokers, and they will represent the city of Cookeville at all International Council of Shopping Center conferences. This contract, we also will establish a web platform. If you want to pop that one, oh, we'll wait. It's the next one. Thank you. We'll have a web presence that will share all of the reports and data that they've created for us about our market, will help give us more exposure. They also will provide updates as we go continually through contacts on Basecamp, which I can give access to. Our planning department has access, so we can stay up to date on what's going on with market trends and sales in our area. One of the interesting things in technology that'll be happening, if you go back one slide, is that one of the newest technologies that has come out is called mobile tracking. We'll be able to utilize that. I think we all understand that in our market, if you're counting rooftops and looking at our per capita income only, you're not capturing our customer base as people drive in. We are the retail hub. So this particular type of data will allow shoppers who have location services set on their phone to ping back to their home cell tower that raw data is captured and will identify the home of that cellphone. In other words, someone who drove in from Overton County goes to Lowe's to purchase a washer and dryer or refrigerator, their smartphone will drop a little point that they're in Cookeville at Lowe's, and that data will indicate that that particular phone lives in Overton County. So it will help us actually specifically be able to define who's shopping in our area. And then along with the demographic reports, when you swipe that card, at minimum, they're getting your zip code. So we also can know whether they bought cat food or whether they bought a refrigerator. And it kind of helps us, and it can help our retailers, too, really get to know their customer better. So the website and the mobile tracking will be the two new things that we'll be doing. And we've set some priorities as we go forward. Our biggest priority is backfilling our recent closures, and there's going to be more. It's part of the market trend. When the downturn in the economy came along, a lot of these retailers, large big box, financed their debt in venture capital and other areas, capital investments, and now that debt's coming due. So even like a Kohl's or places like that are having to restructure their debt, they'll go into Chapter 11, scares everybody to death, and then they'll come back out. But you will have some other closures coming forward at the corporate level. We also will be focusing on new development, the shops there on Willow Avenue, you know, the brokers that are working on that, and then the Tennessee Avenue interchange. We have incredible opportunity out there. We've been working closely with the representatives for that particular area, and they've asked us for some data. I need to give them updated data. And then, again, we'll monitor any other corporate closures. Retail Strategies has honored our $25,000 a year rate, as their rates have gone up to $40,000 a year, and I appreciate their partnership for doing that. In order to be included at the largest International Council of Shopping Centers event, which is in Las Vegas in May, we've asked that we prorate the next few months so that we are under contract with them and that our information can be included and represented at that large show. I'll be happy to answer any questions. Respectfully request your approval.
Yes. Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
Yes. Motion, second. Discussion. Yes, sir.
I'll give you two questions, if you will, for those people maybe in my demographic who might be concerned about there being telephonically stalled. What would your response be?
Yeah. Don't turn your location services on your phone. I mean, you're in total control of that.
Yeah.
You know, you can set it on to be on all the time. The downside of that, though, is there's a huge benefit to keeping that location services on on your cellphone, in that if something were to happen and you were in an accident, someone couldn't find you, that phone pings, it just keeps talking back to the towers. Now, it doesn't say, hello, my name is Councilman Dwight Henry, I only buy cat food once a year. It just says, here's this telephone number, and here's where it lives. So there's pros and cons either way on that one, as you can imagine.
My other question is, is if everything that we hope and anticipate will happen as a result of this contract with this company, what would we hope that that finished product looks like? What would it look like?
I think at minimum, and I've spoken a lot about this to Mr. Davidson and then in work session, I've been in economic development a really long time, and at the local level and at the state level and at the regional southeast level, I have a great network. I can pick up the phone, I can call a vendor, I can call a site consultant. We don't have that network in just strictly retail, okay? And so that's the, at minimum, it provides us a network that we can work with to start to bring, you know, hopefully better retail in. At minimum, we backfill every single store, you know, and we have some kind of control over it. Development's going to happen. We're in a great place and time in our community right now. I'd like for us to be at the table in helping drive that. I don't want every new retail or commercial opening to have the word discount behind it. And to be able to lift up the quality of the goods and services available here, I think the shops at Eagle's Point is an incredible start to that, and that will help set the tone. It puts us one step closer. And then with our micropolitan status, with the census, we're in the top 10, that's a needle mover. That's not just us saying we're growing. That's valid information. So being able to connect the dots, unfortunately, just like industrial manufacturing recruiting, there are no guarantees. I mean, it's economic gardening at its best, and so we just keep throwing out a little seed and a little bit of water and a little bit of fertilizer, keep building that network. So really and truly, it's a risk minimizer as much as anything. Every chance we can get to get in front of some new retailer, to get as much data as we can to prove our point, to encourage, yes, the big T target to finally come, we ought to be doing that. So that's my goal, is to continue to be able to build that network and then to have some outcomes that, at minimal, cover the cost of the contract.
Thank you. Councilmember.
Melinda, what, you know, in the work session, I'm very much in favor of this, what they're doing, particularly the network, you just explained that. Having served almost eight years on the council, I've found out that economic development is a marathon and not a sprint. So it takes these connections and network that this retail strategy has. We might not see something today, but they're getting exposed to people that we do not have a contact with. Question I'm going to leave on the web platform, of course, they're going to, economic development's always driven by data, so they know the demographics, I think they know the census of what we have, and they're getting an idea of the market we service is much greater than they originally thought. I think, did you say it's around 265,000?
About 265,000 is our trade area, yes, sir.
So I think that's opened the eyes, in particular with Retail Strategies explaining this to people and not us, that, and also this, where you're talking about the smartphones, this is other data that they can prove that these people are coming from out of town and doing business in Cookeville. The question I want to ask on this backfill or, say, properties that are available right now, will that be something that could be added to the web platform, the show?
Absolutely.
Okay.
It will include an inventory of availability. I will tell you at least a couple of our empty locations, we couldn't list on there right now because there's already interest. So having that information alone is beautiful. Believe me, I love nothing better when it happens organically and the governments are not involved at all, okay? But to be able to be at the table and have a proactive stance, and let's be honest, we're a sales tax-driven state at the end of the day, and the more we can do to increase that revenue, the more likely we are to keep our property taxes down, be able to feed our qualitative life fund, our economic development fund, I mean, it's all about the sales tax and capturing what's mostly going to Mount Juliet and Turkey Creek right now.
Yeah, we don't want it to escape. We want to stay here.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Hey, Melinda, you know, you know as well as I know that, you know, the most questions I get, it's a little bit frustrating, the most questions I get in my almost eight years, Jim, you're on, you're sitting in the same seat, you understand this, in the last eight years, after coming on board as a city councilman, coming out of the recession, and focusing so hard on business development, okay? Business development, that business park, entice businesses, get jobs here, get jobs here. But the good thing, bad thing, frustrating thing, is that most of the questions I get from the folks out there that are just out there living and breathing here in Cookeville and doing the work, they're always asking me a question, what's new coming in town? What are we getting in town? So I get this. I'm very much on board with what we're doing here. I'm going to vote, I'm going to vote yes for this. But I just, I just want, and you've really answered this, but I'm going to ask you to vote, I'm going to ask you to, a pointed question, and I want you to kind of answer this and draw together all the information you've dispensed with my other council members' questions. I mean, Mr. Shipley, you know, that was, has served here for years and years and years and years, and I very respected in his management of this city, he told me, he told me, he said, you know, that he's always, he said, my focus has always been on getting businesses here, and if the businesses come, retail will follow. Retail will follow. So he felt very strongly, or he had an opinion, I don't know if it was a strong opinion, but he had, he had an opinion that, that let's focus on business, and I kind of followed that lead and took it, and, but now this has kind of changed, and I just really would like you to help answer that question on why we have spent, you know, especially Mr. Woodford and I on the previous council, trying to get things going, focusing on the business side, and now focus on the retail side. You could just...
I think the one thing that remains true today than any reference to the past is it takes both. You cannot have one without the other, for the most part. But in contrast to that, if that, in theory, was true today, then why haven't we gotten more retail? What new is coming to town? And so it happens differently today. It truly does. And again, there've been, whether you talk about the internet, Amazon, whatever, online shopping, all that kind of stuff, the market is changing, and it changes constantly. And so that's a reflection, the data-driven propensity of this particular sector is driven solely by the 24-hour clock of change that they're going through. But in the contrast to that, and being aware of that trend, independent bookstore stores in the United States are up 40%, not big box, but independent, they killed the big box. But you can't buy a book in a community hardly anywhere, so you're starting to see that resurgence. All we need to do is have the ability to stay current on that trend. And if I just look at Cookeville, I'm not going to see the trend, you know? I need that guidance, I need to be a part of the process for our community to get our fair share. And in four more years with another council, I would feel pretty comfortable in saying it's going to be done a little bit differently then as well. So I don't know that there is a good answer. I just know this one will allow us to go one step closer.
You're saying, you're saying the funds that we will vote to appropriate for this will basically keep us on the cusp of what the trends are, and that we can answer those and capture those retail markets as aggressively as we have tried to capture the business sector markets?
Right. We haven't touched retail for a long time. It did happen organically, we just didn't, and it did happen.
Yes.
Okay. I think we have a unique opportunity. I think we have some pent-up demand, and I think we have some momentum. We can either sit back and just let it go, but I feel like it doesn't happen very often. We need to maximize it. Let's get everything we can out of this particular window of opportunity.
Yeah. Thank you. Go ahead.
Well, one thing I've heard on the city council after being on it for 12 years is, when is Target coming?
Yes, sir.
When is Home Depot coming?
Yes, sir.
So I've heard that since the, for the last, off and on for the last 20 years, but it looks like with the, how much, 3,500 new jobs in that neighborhood that we've gotten in the last few years, and that with half our budget for the city being from sales tax revenue, that we need to be very diligent in investing, in making sure that we can increase that. That's the one thing that Jim Shipley did, was send out the monthly sales tax revenue to all the council, and it's one thing you look at every month to see what the percentage is, whether it's increased or not. So for better or worse, we're very dependent on sales tax revenue, and this is just a good way to keep that investment going.
It truly is. And I think we'll take a little bit different approach this next 12 months than we have in the previous contract. The shops at Eagle Point kind of put a little damper on it. The planning department, John and James, both talking about, let's take the data we know we have, let's take those building permits, and let's insert that, our data, not what someone else says out, you know, on some website, and truly help direct how we tell that story to International Council Shopping Centers and that. So my fingers are still crossed for Home Depot and Target. I just know we're closer today than we were four years ago to getting one.
With just one, if one business that was not looking at us comes, this money will be made back tenfold quite easily.
At minimum.
And people do expect and quite honestly demand options that we don't have here, and they're going other places, and as we continue to build that portfolio of stores that we don't currently have here and higher-quality goods, you know, some people are always concerned about that it hurts small businesses. It actually doesn't, because it creates more people coming to our area to shop and exposes our smaller businesses, local businesses, to people that maybe never saw them either. So it truly is a win-win for the whole community when that happens.
Let's go find somebody to open a bookstore soon.
Any other comments?
Just one brief observation, Mayor, just, I could, I'm sitting here thinking about the evolution of our community, and there's always that question, when are we getting a, every term on the, when are we getting this? And I go back to my first term on this council, the question was, when are we getting a crystal?
Yes, sir.
And then all the garden, and now this, and so there's always that, and appreciate your efforts in making this happen, Melinda. Thank you.
Thank you.
Keep going forward.
All vote?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. 70, consider authorizing the city manager to execute a poll attachment agreement with Crown Castle NG Central LLC. Tony Peake.
Mayor and council, as I mentioned at our work session on Monday, we've been working off and on with Crown Castle for approximately two years now, so I'm pleased to be able to bring this to you. Crown Castle is looking to install a fiber-based optical telecommunications network here in town. They're basically from the tower behind Kohl's, going to run a fiber cable down Willow Avenue onto Interstate Drive and install five antennas between Willow Avenue and the bowling world to boost the signal and help everybody's cellphones. This agreement is an updated agreement that we have used with other attaching companies. The agreement provides for the rental rate to be reviewed annually by TVA in case that needs to go up. And the updated, this updated agreement better reflects the relationship of the parties, and the agreement has an initial term of 10 years with one-year renewal options thereafter, and I would recommend your approval. Be glad to try to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
Motion, second. Any discussion?
I have one question. I'm, sorry, I wasn't in the work session, so I just, I'm going to ask this question, and it's probably already been answered many-fold, but, you know, Chattanooga went through a period, and I've been, I've been talking about fiber optic networks for years as I've been on here, trying to, anytime we have a redo of an intersection or something like that, trying to incorporate that into our, into our infrastructure. And Chattanooga has done this and made that commitment, it's quite, quite an expensive commitment. How does that, Tony, does that have any relationship, does this agreement have any relationship to that as far as, as far as allowing our customers to have greater, faster download speeds?
Yes.
Business productivity? That sort of thing?
Yes. Given the area that they're installing the antennas, the speed must be slow in that area, and obviously with Restaurant Row, Walmart, Lowe's, and other places, and that's basically what this is for, is to increase the cellphone's wireless speed in those areas.
So this will improve people's communication, communication capacity, but as far as businesses goes, if they're, if they're trying to do business in the net, on the cloud, that sort of stuff, this is, this is going to, is this going to help that, too?
Not to my knowledge.
Not to your knowledge, okay. Okay. Thank you, Mayor.
Yes. Any other comments? All vote?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. 7E, consider awarding bids for lawn care services for various departments. Greg Brown.
Mayor and council, we recently received and opened bids for mowing at the animal shelter, mowing, we control shrub maintenance and mulching at the Highlands Park Boulevard median, and mowing, we control departmental hillside maintenance and yard work preparing for the water department. Base maintenance was a low bidder on all of those items except for the departmental hillside. Lee Martin Lawn Care was a low bidder on it. I would recommend the low bidder on all those items.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
Motion, second. Any discussion? All vote?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you. 7F, consider awarding bid for backhoe for the water quality control department. Ronnie Kelly.
Mayor and council, we had a backhoe in our annual budget this year, and we're requesting permission to purchase that backhoe off the state bid. State bid, meat equipment was the successful bidder on the state bid. It's a, and they offered a 49.7% reduction in their normal pricing. The cost of that backhoe is $92,134.27. They would recommend approval.
Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
Motion, second. Any comments? Yes, sir.
One quick question on that, but I believe you mentioned in the work session that actually that, that cost of $92,000 is under what we actually allocated in the budget a bit.
Yeah, I think we had allocated 95, and it's cheaper, I think it's about a couple thousand dollars cheaper than we purchased the same basically item two years ago. So we think it's a good deal, and that's the proper place to purchase it.
Any other questions? All vote?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you. 7G, receive parking and utilization study from the planning department. John Ward.
Mayor and councilmembers, tonight I'm going to present to you our 2018 downtown parking utilization study. I'll begin with a little introduction and background. The downtown area in Cookeville is defined as an area within the city's owned as a central business district. That includes what has been historically identified as the two downtown areas of Cookeville. These are the square and the west side. Parking has been perceived to be an issue in the downtown area for some time. Initially, merchants and property owners in the downtown area began indicating to the city that parking was a problem. Also, nearly 60% of respondents to a 2003 Also, nearly 60% of respondents to a 2003 Cookeville citizen survey indicated that downtown parking was a moderate to serious concern. In 2004, the Cookeville planning department completed a complete inventory and analysis of the parking in the downtown area. This was the first known comprehensive study of parking in the downtown. The study included an inventory of how many parking spaces were available and further provided a classification of public and private parking. This initial study provided a baseline for future, for future parking, parking trends. Parking demand for the study area was determined by analyzing the land use of the existing buildings and determining the parking need based on the requirements per square footage included in the Cookeville zoning code. Again, for a 2010 citizen survey, downtown parking was most frequently rated as fair or poor. The 2004 downtown parking study was updated with another downtown parking study of similar scope completed in 2016. And here is a map of the, the study area. And you can see that we have delineated this area into nine sub-areas for the study. Both the 2004 and 2016 parking studies indicated that the downtown area had a parking deficit based on applying a parking ratio to the square feet of existing land use and comparing the results with the available parking supply. The 2016 downtown parking study indicated that the, the deficit had increased since 2004. Both downtown's parking studies recommended that a parking utilization study be completed. A parking utilization study is a common method for further evaluating whether the parking supply is adequate for the parking demand. So our methodology for the study, in late June, early July 2016, and in April 2017, we inventoried the, the utilization again in April when tech was in full session to make sure we could understand those impacts on our downtown area. In these, in these two periods, parking utilization was determined within each of the nine sub-areas for four times a day. We, we inventoried the parking at 9:00 AM, 12:00 PM, 3:00 PM, and 6:00 PM for a given three-day period. And each sub-area included a Friday, which is considered one of the higher utilization days in, in, in the, the observations. We did have some inclement weather that postponed data collection on, on one of the days, but otherwise, you know, the weather seemed to be pleasant and didn't have a perceived effect on the study. For the study period, there were a total of 3,184 parking spaces in the central business district. This, this includes 1,647 public spaces and 1,537 private spaces. The parking utilization was inventoried and then analyzed for the public-private parking combined, and then we analyzed the public parking and private parking separately. We provided a document to you guys, and that was the study document, and it included the appendix A. And the appendix A were illustrations of the parking utilization by each sub-area, the highest utilization rates. And we also, the full study includes an appendix B. This is what a map looks like in the appendix A that shows, you know, the highest utilization. This is sub-area one on a Thursday in July. In appendix B of the document, we've included maps of, of each sub-area for each observation, for each parking utilization that was inventoried. So these maps show how parking looked at 9:00 AM, noon, 3:00 PM, and, and 6:00 PM. Appendix B also includes charts and graphs that show you the trends in the data. We didn't provide you the full appendix B because it's a pretty substantial document, but we will be publishing that on our, on our website for, to be available to the public. I do want to give, to recognize our department, Ken Young, and our GIS staff, Ben Drury and Terry Clark. They worked really hard on this. We put a lot of time and effort into it. So for our study, an occupancy threshold is typically used to determine whether a parking shortage is present. Reviews of parking utilization studies from other cities indicate ranges from 75% to 90% occupancy are used to evaluate parking availability. A high occupancy rate may indicate a shortage of parking, while a low occupancy rate may indicate an abundance of available parking. For the purpose of our study, we used a conservative occupancy threshold of 75% to indicate if a possible shortage in, in parking was available. For our most recent sub-area, for the, for our most recent study, the nine sub-areas of the central business district consisted of 226 parcels containing approximately 92.6 acres. So our findings. Subareas three, and that's the area around the courthouse, you know, immediately around the square. Subarea one, which is the Justice Center, and subarea seven, which is, you know, the, on the west side, our downtown parking lot, our public lot there, one of the most utilized in town, consistently have the most utilized parking in the city. During the 2000s, in 2016 and 2017 study periods, there were nine observed instances of parking utilizations above the 75% threshold we established. And all of these were of public parking. We never observed that in any of the private parking we inventoried. Three of these instances that were above 75% were in sub-areas two and four. And those areas, you know, parking is a very, the public parking is, you know, 25 spaces. It's a very low percentage of the, of the parking in the area. And, and in those sub-areas, public parking isn't primarily used to serve the demand. Subarea seven, for our study, had six observed instances over the 75% threshold. Six observed instances in public parking. And also, there were an additional seven observed instances that were over 60% occupied and less than 75% occupied of, of the public parking. And this is a map that shows, you know, the highest occupation, utilization in sub-area seven. You can see all of your parking along West Broad and Depot Street is, is taken essentially. And, and there are just very few vacant spots in that lot behind the west side area. This, this particular map shows a utilization of 90.1%. There's 12 total vacant spaces. You know, one thing I want to note about sub-area seven while we're discussing it is, you know, when, when this utilization was observed, the Debras Design Lots, which is another area of public parking, you know, there's 53 available spaces there. And there were around 40 available spaces when, when we observed this high utilization rate for sub-area seven. Another thing I want to mention is, we all know that people park in this lot, this gravel area, which is the proposed site of our hotel convention center. I wanted to give you guys some numbers about the, the parking that was observed there. I did count the cars that were in that lot. We didn't consider it for the, for the study because that isn't parking. It could be closed off at any time or anything, but just to have some perspective on it. The average parking in that lot was 15 cars, and the highest observed number of cars we ever saw in the lot was 45. You know, again, that's, you know, a pretty significant amount of vehicles that are parking there. Next, we'll talk about sub-area three. Subarea three ranks in the top three of utilization for public and private combined, and when you break out the public and private parking separately. Although sub-area three had no observed parking utilization rates above the 75% threshold, it did have eight instances over 60% occupied but less than 75% occupied. So, you know, this is one of our busier areas of the downtown area. And here's a, a map showing the highest utilization rate for sub-area three. This is on, this is in July. It's the day, Tuesday. Well, this is Tuesday, April 11th, 2017. At this utilization rate, there were 67.6% of the parking spaces occupied. You know, but even at that level of occupancy, there were still 104 vacant spots serving the area. One of our other high utilization areas was sub-area one. It had six instances over the 60% threshold, but none over 75% occupied. Again, this is a, a map of a high utilization there. And this is, you know, at a 9:00 AM time, this usually coincides with court proceedings at the Justice Center. They have a high occupancy rate when, when they have court. And lastly, I wanted to just talk about sub-area six. You know, this sub-area had four instances over 60% occupied but less than 75%. This is one of our highest utilization rates for sub-area six in this map. And this is on a Wednesday at 6:00 PM, so this is essentially when First Baptist Church is holding services that night. So some recent developments. A proposed hotel convention center located adjacent to sub-area seven will provide 529 parking spaces with 317 of these located in a five-story parking garage. The developers for the project have indicated that the parking garage will be available for general parking for persons other than hotel guests, but that will be with a fee. Another recent development, the city of Cookeville has partnered with Cookeville First Baptist Church to enter a long-term lease to provide additional public parking partially within and directly adjacent to sub-area six. This new parking lot located at the southeast corner of East Spring Street and South Wallon Avenue will provide an additional 135 parking spaces for a total of 185 parking spaces. Some of these additional parking spaces will be reserved to serve employees of SAIC and their Technology Integration Gateway Center established in the Regent, Regent Spank Building. That company, you know, at the, at the time planned to employ approximately 300 people. You know, obviously, we hope that they grow above and beyond that. But the additional parking spaces will be available for the public on evenings, weekends, and holidays. In December 2017, the council, you guys adopted updates to municipal code regulations for parking in municipal-owned and controlled parking lots and within the public right-ofways. The new parking provisions address several concerns, including issues with commercial and fleet vehicles, trailers and merchandise occupying parking in city-owned and controlled lots and our, and in our right-ofways. The updated regulations now prohibit that overnight parking of those vehicles. Some of these issues were particularly evident in sub-area seven, and that's one of our higher demand parking areas. And the new regulations should improve parking availability in that sub-area. We also included other provisions in the updated municipal code, municipal parking code in anticipation of increased future demands, providing necessary measures to encourage parking space turnover in the downtown area. In summary, overall, the parking utilization rates increased for each sub-area from the 2016 and 2017 inventory periods. And this is indicative of a vibrant downtown area. With the, with the exception of sub-area seven, the downtown area as a whole does not appear to be suffering from a parking deficit, but possibly from a, a lack of perceived convenient parking. There are periods during the day that the first-choice parking location may be occupied, requiring a parking patron to seek an alternative spot. For a number of utilization intervals, public parking in sub-area seven did have peak observed occupancies exceeding the 75% threshold. However, additional underutilized public parking exists in other sub-areas that could sufficiently serve the demand. Parking availability within two or three city blocks to reach a desired destination is typical for most vibrant downtown areas. Special event occurrences can also have significant impacts on parking utilization, but these occurrences are irregular. Additional public parking installed by the city of Cookeville in the First Baptist Church partnership should possibly impact parking availability to accommodate special events and evening and weekend demand. And the parking garage proposed with the downtown hotel convention center should also have a positive impact on utilization rates in sub-area seven, providing additional parking options. Also, the municipal code updates prohibiting commercial fleet vehicles, trailers, and merchandise from occupying public parking should have an immediate positive impact on parking availability in several sub-areas, and particularly in sub-area seven. Our field data strongly suggests that existing parking supply is meeting the overall current demand, with the possible exception of sub-area seven. While sub-areas one, three, and six are reaching levels of concern, the utilization data indicates current available parking supply in these sub-areas is meeting the demand. To ensure adequate parking will continue to be available in the downtown, in Cookeville downtown area, the planning commission would like to provide the following recommendations. So our recommendations from the study, increase capacity in select areas with caution, and be mindful of opportunities to acquire property in or near high, high parking occupancy areas. We recommend to reevaluate sub-area seven to see if the municipal code amendments have made a positive impact on parking availability. Educate the public about parking options, you know, through our website and other modes of communication. Improve signage to increase public awareness of public parking locations. Some public parking lots have no identifying signage. Installing wayfinding signs and signage at entrances to public parking lots would increase awareness of available public parking. We recommend to prioritize parking for shoppers and visitors. Business owners and employees should utilize less desirable parking spots further away from the business entrances. We recommend to enhance our pedestrian crossings because, you know, there's going to, you know, you're going to have to walk a couple blocks in some instances to get to your destination. Evaluate and reconvigure existing parking, public parking lots if feasible to maximize parking spots while still maintaining safe and effective ingress and ingress to public streets. We recommend to pave and, and stripe existing parking areas that are currently not paved, and if paved, not striped. Possibly restripe existing parking areas to increase the number of spaces. Improve enforcement of existing time-restricted public parking. Increase the number of time-restricted public parking spaces. Install parking meters to encourage turnover of the convenient parking spaces. Construct additional public service, service parking areas. Evaluate the feasibility of constructing a public and our private parking garage. Implement a transit system to shuttle downtown visitors and customers at remote parking areas to and from the downtown. Require the provision of off-street parking for all new development in the downtown area. Require new developments in the downtown area which cannot or choose not to provide off-street parking to pay an in lieu of fee that would be utilized to pay for the provision of additional public parking. And establish a downtown improvement district in which downtown property owners are assessed a fee or a tax to pay for parking improvements. So that's my report on our downtown utilization study, and I'm happy to answer any questions you guys may have for me.
Thank you for the presenting that very thorough report. Congratulations to the department. We appreciate your all's hard work on that. That's, took a lot of time to put all those dots on there, didn't it? Council members, any, have quick, Councilman Henry?
Let me just echo what the mayor said, John. Thank you so much to you and your staff for this, this very significant study, an important one. Two questions. One is, I guess, more about attitude that's, that's hard to measure. And I think you would sort of address both of these already, but I want to make sure I've got good clarity on it. You know, we, we, our residents, myself included, you know, will park at Walmart and walk a quarter of a mile to get there and not think anything about it. But if we can't get right in front of the store we want downtown, somehow it's, it's not convenient. So I, I, I don't know how you measure that, how you factor that in. But did I hear you say that vibrant downtowns, to the extent that you could find a parking spot two or three blocks from where you're, where you're wanting to go, that, that can, if, if, as long as it's that close, most downtowns continue to be vibrant?
You know, that's, that's typical, because the land use in downtown areas is not used for parking. You know, you don't have a store with a big lot. The, you know, it's usually a lot denser, commercial development. And, you know, the parking is in, you know, areas around the outskirts of the downtown, and people walk into the area. You know, and that's just typical in most areas. If you go to Nashville and you can get within two blocks of your destination, I mean, you, you consider yourself very lucky. And obviously, they're a much bigger city than ourself.
Sure.
That's just, you know, the land use is, it's, it's not used for, you know, parking in most instances. It's more dense, commercial development.
But over time, if they can park that close, there's, there's a strong chance that our downtown will continue to be vibrant, which is, I think, an important piece of our rural development, in my view. My second question is, I've got two parts. One is, you, you touched on the conference center, and that, that's not a reality yet. We understand that. More hoops jump through. Not count no chickens before they hatch. But, but to the extent that that does happen with those 317 and 529 parking, are we, are we able to have any kind of determination about how that could impact this study or what, how it might be altered? And the second part of that question is, the enforcement piece, did you discuss? Did you discuss how that enforcement piece might be carried out? Hiring new personnel? Have the police officers focusing on just that? Just those two things, if you would, John. I appreciate it.
Well, I mean, with, you know, obviously, as you mentioned, the convention center is still just, you know, it's, it's just a proposal at this point. I mean, we've, we've spoken with them and everything. There will be excess parking there, you know, for the majority, outside of when they host a, a fully occupied conference or something. So we anticipate that there will be excess parking there that will give downtown patrons an additional option to park outside of the public parking and the private parking options that are there. You know, obviously, we also think that will make our downtown busier in some ways as well. well, too. So, you know, there's a lot to be determined. And as far as the second part of your question, you know, I think it requires some more study to see if we do want to start, you know, implementing more time, you know, more time restrictions and, and start enforcing that to a greater degree. And that's something that our updated parking code that you guys approved back in December allows the city manager to do, through the code, is to, to look at those issues and study them and see what needs to be implemented to encourage that turnover. I hope I've answered your question.
Thank you, John. Thanks again for your work.
Councilman Woodford?
John, I want to thank you again in the, for presenting this, and the whole Planning Department, all the work that went in this. It's kind of obvious up around the square that you have a state highway and a federal highway converge up that you're going to have some parking situation because there's government business, courthouse, whatnot goes on. The west side, on another hand, is, in the last few years, has emerged that there's restaurants that have become very popular over there, and as a result, there's not enough parking there, or perceived to be parking. I think we mentioned in the, and you brought it up, one of the recommendations, signage, improved signage to show in directions to public parking would be an immediate, have immediate effect on possibly directing people to public parking that they might not perceive that is there already. Leading into that, with the new parking lot down here on the corner on, on Spring, the Baptist, will we be able to put a signage on there saying, "Public Parking"?
Well, that, you know, there is an agreement with SAIC when they were recruited that we would provide parking for them because they were concerned with where their employees were going to park.
Okay.
So, you know, I think that's something we'll definitely have to look into and see, but that does, that, those reservations of spaces were not outside of the work, the workday.
Okay.
So, you know, and on evenings, weekends, and holidays, you know, that should be available for the public to park, and that's something I guess we need to look into.
I wouldn't think it would, you know, they would need it on Wednesday night, week and Sunday during the day. I don't think they have over capacity. I might miss.
It specifies it's just for the workday, so weekends, micro, tomorrow, and evening is available for the public. So if we have weekend events here, the public can park there.
So the sign, the signage could say that.
Yeah.
Public parking available.
Okay.
That's what we would probably do, is to make sure public realize it's open and available from five PM till.
Yeah, I just wouldn't want if we had an event on downtown that people would drive by that, not realizing they could park there.
Well, that's the kind of stuff we're gonna have to decide on, is, is proper signage.
We have a sign department, too, don't we?
Yes.
That'd be handy. Will those be up tomorrow?
And another lot, you know, the Debras Designs lots, a lot of people aren't aware that that lot was previously Debras Designs, that's what we still refer to it as, that's a public parking lot.
Yeah.
And I don't think a lot of people are aware that that's available for the public parking.
That's a good, very good point, John. People don't even, they don't think it's private.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
It's very under, yeah, it's underutilized there, for sure.
You done? Yes.
I do have just a, I don't really have any, I don't have a question. Maybe as I keep talking, I'll, I'll generate a question, because that, a lot of times will pop in my head, you know how that works. But, you know, I just, these, this is really good, this is a really good problem. I mean, we have, we have, we have a vibrant downtown. I can remember, we did not have a vibrant downtown. Rick, I know you do, Chuck, I remember when our downtown was a little bit, kind of, wasn't a whole lot going on. There's something going on all the time down here. So these, these are good problems, and parking has, all of a sudden, has, has followed that. I, I appreciate the hard work that's been done by our administrators on, and especially the Planning Commission, on trying to figure out this parking situation. I, I feel like the, the parking garage and the assistance that, that the city has had in trying to, to enable this to happen, this convention center with the parking garage, the First Baptist Church, the deal that we made with that, and our city manager did such a good job in negotiating that. And with the new codes, I, I feel confident that we've got the pieces in place in order to try to handle that, handle this. And Ms. Kiefer has said this before, we've, there's a lot, there's a lot of education period time. We've got, folks in Cookeville are just, we're just used to parking, we're just used to parking right in front of where we want to go. So we've got, we have a little bit of time to educate our, our, our citizens. So, all these things, I think, are going to really help. I, I would hope going forward, and this is something I've, I've, I've spoken to all my council members about, and Mr. Davidson about, is that if there's, if there's a piece of property available that, around the downtown area that is laying fallow, or is available and, and we, and we can afford that in our budget, to, to, to seriously look at that, purchasing that for, just specifically for parking issues. And I, I'm, I'm going to ask my council members, let's keep that, let's keep our ear to the ground to be able to do that. But I, we've got to have, my perception is, is we have to give this a little bit of time to see how this is going to flesh out. This study has been, been transpiring for not just a couple months, but it's been transpiring for a long time, for a really long time. And we're not going to solve this in overnight, but I think we've got the pieces in place in order to get, to get this going. So, I don't really have any questions. I just, I, I would just encourage my, my council members and our administrators, let's keep our ears, ear to the ground, look for, look for property that might be available in order to continue to take care of this, take care of this. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Did you include Vice Mayor Epps' new driveway in this? Because there's several spaces there that would be.
Right there, I'm right there next to zone three.
Public parking until he's off the council, and then it's private parking?
Thank you, thank you again for that. Okay, this concludes our agenda portion of the meeting. We have time at the end. If anybody would like to speak to the council on non-agenda items, do we have anybody that would like to do that? Stephen from the chamber, welcome. Any, any updates from you?
Glad to be here, busy time for us, as always. Thank you for all your support, your participation, everything we have going on.
Very good. All right. We are, oh.
We can say something.
Sure.
Ms. Kiefer reminded me of an important thing with the location services on your iPhone when she was talking about the nine-one-one board that the mayor serves on has just introduced a PulsePoint about a month ago, and there are about a thousand people on it that know how to do CPR that are available for emergency if you have your location services turned on, which we want. And so, we want to encourage everyone, including city employees that know how to do CPR, to have the PulsePoint app on their smartphone with the location services turned on. Back in January, I think, a firefighter and a off-duty police officer helped the Putnam County Sheriff's Office save someone's life who left intact from the hospital because they were available. So, thank you, Mrs. Kiefer, for reminding me that everyone needs to have a PulsePoint if they know how to do CPR, and if they don't, we have a, a group called the Carmen's Fund, which will come to your group and teach you CPR, along with how to stop bleeding in case you get shot, and how to do, use an AED of that nature. So, thank you for reminding me about this, and I'm sorry I prolonged the council meeting a couple of minutes to talk about that.
Any other comments?
Yes, go ahead.
We're adjourned.